We're now back into open session. Yeah, anybody outside or like we're talking about the city manager process. So we're talking about our next steps. Looking at interviews. Um, one thing you had talked about interviews Bob is is there a way? Is there a way like where staff meets kind of in a little bit informally? Just time talk, there's some set kind of questions that they get and then then they they give us our observations and then we do that interview later in the day. It's more, they're not sitting here really doing the same question, but it's more.
Yes.
Keen, they might ask, hey, show me, tell me a situation, what would you do in this, you know, and then they can give us their observation later.
Sure, there's different options for that. You can have a panel with, have some staff on, say the senior staff. Also have a reception, if you will, away from what I'll call the the community reception, if you want to have employees meet and greet the candidates as well. Get their observations from that and you can, you can ask where there's got the cards that are made up that says, you know, what did you observe on the candidate? You can read those later on. That's another one option. The other option is obviously have representatives from the employee group along with the senior staff. There's different ways to do it. There's also, you you wouldn't want to necessarily ask the staff or employees to expect to come out to a community reception, for instance. That's going to be off work time and. Except for the take, especially the. Offer that option. I will strongly encourage you, recommend that you should have some type of participation from staff, one way or another. There's a buy-in in that issue, that's making it, same with your committees, your commissions you have of volunteers who sit on your boards and commissions. Those offering a reception to the community, let them meet the candidate. Somewhere along the line, you have to provide input. On candidates, city manager. So I would, where that will be and when and how it'll.
Like in a meeting, they get a public comment.
Yes.
They had, they don't need to be in the interview process.
That's correct, but they have to have some exposure to the candidate.
But they'll know a week ahead who they are so they can do their research.
We can release the the resumes of the candidates, that you can show them the cover letter, you make that public, those are the only two things that are really our public information. They can, they can get all those conclusions from that, but I would encourage a reception.
I haven't, sorry. Or I was just gonna say, it's a business, a local business, they want to host like.
I'd love to show them OMEC, but when would that be? You know, there's so much rooms there and even PCC you could, in the conference room you could meet and. Um, we have a lot of our meetings there.
Want to support a local business and have them show up and say, hey, like.
That too, but I like the the staff, where the staff kind of meets and greet, okay.
Also, uh, it all really depends on the community and like I said, you know them best, but I had a search, I think it was Canby where they invited the chamber commerce. But also the executive director, they invited the superintendent, they invited the local hospital administrator, they invited the key stakeholders in the community. Sometimes they're interested, sometimes they're not, but you can also invite other members of the community that you feel have the council members, for instance.
And um.
Series of.
Throw out ideas or recommendations, like you're, if we do two a day over a two-day period type of a thing, I don't have any finalists we have. You could do, you know, an hour meeting greet with the staff and they could go into an interview in the afternoon, eat.
Do that.
And have a. Meet in, it's this, for the public comment, it's not necessarily a meet and greet, right? The people aren't there.
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing Bob suggest is that. Have of us as a body that's interview. And you have more of a um. Meet and greet, sort of get to know the candidates, staff. Do. Some assessment there, observations. Then the second, the third bucket would be like a community mixer.
With the candidate.
With the candidates, correct, and they're able to do observation cards.
You ever have two candidates together?
Uh, you would have them all in the same room.
Okay, so that's one.
Yeah, the community like mixer and alcohol.
I was gonna say we.
Or you could do a one drink. But either way, like it's, you invite the people, they come, it's a social environment. So then they're able to do observation cards and. Invite that back to GMP. And want a casual. Do not want a formal setting for staff because staff is not interviewing their future boss, they're getting to know candidates and able to. So I think you want a. As um, a semi-casual environment, right? It's not like a formal sit-down where it's like.
How many people would you think would be a good amount? Are we talking the fire chief? A few staff, you know, high-level staff and a couple.
With a few community.
What are we doing in a public place? Why don't we just, are we doing in a public place? Like a restaurant or?
Or the community mixer?
Yeah.
Yeah, the community mixer, like in a.
Have it at an auditorium, you can have it at a gymnasium.
We also have a farmer's market.
If you did a Thursday, let's say Wednesday, Thursday, so it's a bit Wednesday, there's the staff, stakeholder. Then later, another hour, they interviewed, then that night, all four candidates come to a dinner, you know, together. The next day, the other two go through those other process.
They don't encourage.
Take them all through at the same time and they end, so do all the community engagement, all of that, the stakeholders, they all meet with the candidates first round. I think we should, yes.
Yes.
Because we should be the final interviewers.
After getting all the feedback.
All of the observation inputs as well, so that gives us time to prepare.
Tuesday night mixer, Wednesday, two different interviews, Thursday, two more interviews, unless we think we can do them all at one day.
Need to do it in two days.
Yeah.
So a night and the next day.
You you could, you could bring them in on an afternoon, you could either do the, I suggest a tour of the community with somebody who's knowledgeable, we can show them around, that person also can provide input. Anyway, have that and then have the reception, which I'll call the mixer would be in the evening, so the folks who are obviously not available during the day could be there. Employees in the afternoon as well, they can have their little mixture someplace like here, just it's, everybody's got this opportunity to fill out a comment. We'll show those to the mayor council during some period of the next day, the next day, then you would have the round robin. It maybe it's two or three panels, you'd have each of those candidates go through the, they've got, we can help you with the questions. Getting, you know, the candidates, but they're really gonna make observations that they can then provide back to you folks. So as far as. See if strengths, also not so much the deficiencies, but where does that person gonna need support? They would be hired, where where are some of their shortcomings? That that will help you for when you want to make a, call a work plan for that person, should have when they start work. People say, okay, here's what we need to do, here's our, we're we're gonna address, or is this person's concern for, you know, six, twelve, eighteen months? Because we need to get them ready, they can perform, so you can have an interview or excuse me, a review of their performance after six months, and then again after one year, and then annually after that. We strongly encourage you to do that as well.
Six months if we're, if there are somewhere in June, entire end of the year and then. Every end of the year.
I would think that uh, they would come in, let's say, what is the afternoon, or they'd come, the four candidates would come in. We would assign if you, one department head for each one. Um, Lori for one, Dave for one, that kind of thing, to take them around and show them the city. Then you'd pick a site, a decent site, to where we would have an open house for anybody in the community, and you'd have cookies and.
Yeah.
Something, but but we would also send out letters to special people, the leaders in the community, the fire chief, I, the school superintendent. We would invite them to the same one, but we'd give them like a a personal invitation. So they're really included. And then the next day, you begin the process of.
Having panels.
Having the panels.
And I would strongly encourage you to not have just senior staff on one and community, or committee committees or board members on the second one, and committee members on the third, mix them up. So it's good observation from all sides and you get a much better. Observation.
There's multiple panels versus, ver- instead of staff and council.
Yes.
Or we can mix them up, but there's more than just two.
There'd be, there are councils, one panel, and then I would encourage at least two more panels, have a combination of key community members, of um. Have committee.
Those are all questions already pre-approved, you know, all written down.
Baked.
Effects, they all.
We'll, we'll provide those listed questions, Larry can vet them through you folks, depending what you want to look at, we've, we've been doing this for a long time. We we try to get ones that are more focused towards the community that obviously were.
If the staff's asking a question, they're just gonna re, they, they're gonna give their observation. We listen, it'll be maybe public or we'll get the recording.
Right.
We'll see what they're answering.
It'd be perhaps a setup in here where, uh, you know, the uh, panels go through their, their uh. Their action with the, the candidates, and they come back and they brief you, it's called. Of the strengths and the. The uh, positions that you need to be aware of, make observations. Then you take that, if you want to, if you want to interview them in the morning as part of the round robin, you can do that in the afternoon, but you've got four candidates. Do this in the morning. Three panels plus yours, we all interviewing at the same time, and you go into executive session, it's gonna take a little time in the afternoon to executive session. Uh, perhaps.
Do you think you can get through all four, three panels in a day?
In the morning.
Is each one like a half-hour panel?
It'd be more likely forty-five minutes than have a little break in between there, because you're gonna want the, there's gonna be facilitators. I want them to ob- get observations from the panel members after each of the, of the.
It's a good number in each panel.
Six to seven. Have less than that, anything more than that, there's not a lot of participation.
And it's all the week and trying to get.
Yeah, if you have three other panels besides the mayor council, that's gonna be, you know, fifteen, eighteen people.
Six each or seven?
It's with four, it's it's a little, it's a little tougher. Brenda's our subject matter expert in getting these things scheduled, but you can certainly do it the morning, if you started at nine, you'd obviously have to, you'd be at one o'clock, but then. So you would, you have to have a break in someplace, but then you could go into your, your afternoon session, executive session, maybe like two, two-thirty, right after that, so there's, there's room for it.
What day would this be? Are we talking Saturday, week, during the week?
I was gonna say, well, it has to be mid-June so I can actually plan ahead to get vacation time.
We need to.
June eleventh, twelfth.
Yeah, we're, we're roughly a little less than three weeks out to that, those dates, that would be optimal. We couldn't go any less than that, because we gotta get background checks done, reference checks done. Could also do this with, within that amount of time, if you're okay with making a, you know, some type of a. Selecting a preferred candidate, not having all that work done, but I wouldn't encourage that, and I would, Brenda, we prefer to have all that information to you, not going back over these things.
Bob, do you incorporate like a, like a personality assessment, say like DISC, the final candidates?
We haven't done those lately, but you can do those if you like, it's always an option to do that, we also provide a more thorough background check once you have a candidate, we could, you know, you could actually. Maybe the mayor and a council member could accompany one of our folks, we got, you know, a police chief who goes out and does some of these things, people, lots of community where this person's at, bucks more people. We don't necessarily encourage it, but it is, has been done by a number of cities who want to get more in-depth about that candidate looking at.
Well, I think I've worked with the DISC, well, there's many, but I I've worked with that DISC and it's easier, it's easy to, when you know. What kind of personality you're working with and then they are, how to communicate or how they communicate with their, with their staff, I think it'll be very useful. I don't, it's not very expensive, it's like maybe five dollars for.
Encourage it, after you've got a preferred candidate and once that person starts, it could be perceived as being um. Disadvantaged to some, because some of these folks, you know, they they do these personality tests and, you know, they may not come out accurate. It also may influence your decision-making process and they may not necessarily be the best candidate either.
I mean, yeah.
You know, June twelfth is a Wednesday, um, the following Wednesday is June nineteenth. And so.
We need to be pushed to the twentieth.
If we were to go that week, twenty twenty-first, Friday night. For any week, it's a definite no.
I'd say the week of the. Fourteenth, I'm actually available, like that. Very doable.
Guys to start thinking that earlier week and then then if we have to bump it, because I mean, we can versus start the late week. And if that ends up.
I'm on vacation the week of the seventeenth, that week.
Yeah, so.
I'm gone.
Week of the tenth. I hear the week of the tenth.
Be okay, mayor and council, if we went through this checklist.
Definitely.
Oh, okay.
Brenda can record this and then we get it, see, get it all accurate.
But Brenda.
Okay. Perfect, they have a copy in front, wonderful. Um, so let's discuss real quick the dates that we're looking, I know that we were just doing that, are we thinking the fourteenth and fifteenth then?
Uh, no, well, I was gonna say, I thought you were out the fourteenth and fifteenth.
Yes, I'm out.
I was thinking the week prior, like the, the ten.
June?
Yeah.
Like, well, on thirteenth?
Yeah.
I'm gone, not that.
Yeah, probably.
Week of the.
Saturday on?
There's one other counselor who we have to consider as well?
Andrew. Twelfth and thirteenth.
Basically.
The night of the twelfth and all day on the thirteenth.
Thirteenth. Yeah.
So we think you.
Yes, the twelfth and thirteenth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, I do know we have another finals on the twelfth, Bob, does that work for your schedule?
Yes, I'll, I'll look it up with the other client, they have not selected a date, so um. Didn't select one yesterday, so they'll have to.
Let's say eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, it won't work for me.
Okay.
And you, eleventh, twelfth.
They don't work for you?
No, they do work for me, yeah.
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, but.
It works fine for everybody else, because I don't have an appointment, but I can move that point.
Okay, so the eleventh through the thirteenth works for everyone, are we wanting to focus on the twelfth and thirteenth then?
No, eleventh.
Eleventh and twelfth.
And eleventh and twelfth, thank you, perfect, okay.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
And now, as far as reimbursements go, uh, we were talking about who was in town and who might need airfare, is the city willing to cover the candidate's airfare? Including one check bag?
Should it? Do we need airfare?
I thought everyone was. Only one that may possibly, but it's gonna be, I'd love to talk to him, it's Berger, he's a, that's a long, long guy, but I think he'd be okay with it, so.
Where's he at?
Open question.
Excuse me.
He's in Stanfield. Whoops.
Okay.
That individual. Uh, could either drive it or fly it at almost the same price.
I would say, yes, we would pay it if we had to.
Well, do we have anybody online? Okay, we can probably make a correction.
Yeah.
Go back up. No, we're fine. Um.
Apologize.
We would. Maybe. Air if needed.
Um, if, I mean, if necessary, it would not be, it would just be a short hop, right?
Yeah. For difficult longer.
So, yeah, the answer is yes.
Yeah.
Perfect, what about for a spouse?
No.
No.
Okay. Uh, to, are, is the city going to reimburse mileage?
Tell us if it's.
Yes.
Is that normal?
Yes.
Typical, yes. Yeah.
What about a car rental if a particular individual needs to have airfare?
That's.
Um, and how long are you willing to have that car rental for?
That sounds right, three days, three days.
Three days.
I would even offer a car rental if someone would rather do that than get mileage, right? Sometimes it's cheaper.
Lisa would charge for gas.
All right.
Yeah.
File your car rental.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Did you catch that, Brenda? Yep.
I think so, I think we said three days, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, and then what about lodging, a hotel stay, is the city going to pay for that or reimburse for that?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Or how many nights?
Santa Jo's.
Yes.
Three?
Two.
Two. Perfect, and would you like the candidates to arrange their own accommodations or sometimes cities get discounts and other things, so they prefer to arrange those accommodations?
We don't have discount, so they can do their own, we would help them if needed.
Susan said she'd do that with.
We don't have a hotel, we don't even have a hotel in Scapula, so. They'll be in St. Helens.
They can do their own, they can do.
Perfect, we'll have the candidates do it. Um, is there a form that they are going to need to submit for those reimbursements?
Yes.
And do they need the receipts attached to those?
Yes.
And who should the candidates send those, that information to?
Susan Reeves.
Who, sorry?
Susan Reeves, R-E-E-V-E-S.
Okay.
Got it. Mark it important, please. It goes to the top of her inbox.
And then we decided there is a candidate reception, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
And.
Do we have a budget for that?
That's the, this, uh, people invited is a list that we created, it's a private party.
No.
And how the community open and then we'll.
That's our public.
It's both.
Yes.
I I would do both, in the same, same time.
You broadcasted and it got off to me, but you also, Larry mentioned, I think it's a good idea.
Personal input.
Yes. Individuals would like to see.
Good idea. Do you have a budget for that?
We'll have.
Yeah.
Then once we know the.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what kind of numbers do we would have in that, what do you expect, and are we bigger than a senior center? Are we, we don't have big places that you can eat, you can do a, maybe get the high school cafeteria and have someone cater it.
You know, to be an example, they drove at a hundred and fifty. They're obviously very interested, Canby had about sixty.
Booth cart, and if it's nice weather.
Think, think annual, like town meeting, like annual update. Maybe half.
Your town meeting was, was well-attended, uh, it's possible you might have any that make people attend.
Problem is, I gotta, it's right at the end of the school year and there's some, actually.
I mean, the senior center, you could sprinkle people throughout, right? Maybe if it's nice.
And if you had, like, as a two-to-three-hour thing, people could come for an hour and leave and.
Right, like, it it doesn't actually need to be like a full dinner or anything, it's.
Like cookies.
Yeah, it's light refreshments, socialize.
Be, you know, starting at, say, six or six-thirty, you you get everybody there, and then about six-thirty, I, the mayor would introduce everyone, thank you for coming. And he'd introduce me, I'd introduce each of the candidates, they're gonna speak for five minutes about who they are, you'll have the mingler again for another hour or so until. But yeah, then they, yes, it's all.
Eight o'clock, done.
Couple hours.
When do you start, six to eight? We could play bingo, um, I'll, I'll check with the senior center right away on Tuesday, the eleventh. Day, and it would be, um. I can ask them if they want to take care of the food and we pay them a little, or we can take care of it, like you said, it's just. All. Because they do serve big lunches there every Wednesday and Friday.
Sounds great. Um, let me know if that senior center doesn't end up working out and then I'll change that on our records.
Then if.
Um, then we decided there would be an executive session after the interviews, is that correct?
Yes, after the panels, yes.
Yes.
So we're looking, that would be on the twelfth?
Yes. And then we are going to do a tour, now I know it was kind of tossed around about doing the tour on the eleventh. Something you can consider too is the tour can actually run the same time as the panel interviews. So a lot of times people will have like three panels and then one of the candidates will actually be on a tour with a guide. And so it kind of runs at the same time, um, that is something you can consider with a tour, so that way it doesn't.
Do you ever have two candidates together on a tour?
Have before.
Yes. Is that awkward?
The interesting part about that is if you have a person who's uh.
Yeah.
receptive, hears a lot of interview, that person hear a lot of information from the panic they're sitting there, couple of some of that as well.
It'd be like Dave in a tour of some of our facilities. Um, how would he then be in the panel without giving?
I think Susan wants to be the tour bus guy.
He could have two individuals on the tour, so we could do two candidates on a tour with one person, staff actually doing the highlights, and we can have another person. Are with them as well. Their staff.
But yeah, have a driver as well, so yeah.
Me Nick. And Jake, but mostly had Dave and.
Well, and it's.
Or Daryl.
Brenda makes a good point.
Thirty-five minutes, right? Those tours are very quick, high level.
Yeah, probably not get out of the car, film them.
Brenda makes a good point, if you have uh, panels, the mayor council and then two others, maybe up to seven each. That way you could have, then you could have a tour out for the slot.
I like that, because I was thinking, trying to do four panels is gonna be.
A lot of people.
I think it's too much, I think two panels, completely, city commissioners, all of that, two of those with us, that's three. Do the tour, that gives that four, that really kind of rounds out.
Yeah, I like that plan, I like that quite a bit.
Each person has rightfully a three-hour day, they're overlapping, kind of.
Yeah, they rotate through.
Each panel's forty-five and the tour's forty-five, that's forty-five, 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 forty-five.
Yeah.
And then overlapping, so you need two places for interviews, might overlap.
Three places for interviews, yeah.
Yeah, if you'd have the mayor council in here and you have two other spots, or wherever else.
They take fifteen minutes in between to travel and move.
I will.
Use the library, use time.
I probably need to reserve that. Air library.
Senior Center, I mean, not the historical society.
Yeah, we could have a house.
House, those three.
Yeah.
These are places within walking distance.
Yes.
Boom, boom.
Right here.
Excellent.
Historical house, library.
And we, we don't have a fourth, so we couldn't have a.
That's actually be a tour.
What room would we use at the Watts House?
Right. Could use the.
These, yeah.
That's what they use for their meetings.
That would be, that would be our smallest group.
Yeah.
There's four. If you were five interviewers. First room in the, in the, around the kitchen.
Well, mi- mix appropriately the, the groups.
So I heard the historical society, the library, and what was the third one?
Council chambers.
Council chambers, and then where would you like the candidates to meet for that tour? Where are they meeting their guide?
We have them meet them right outside city hall.
The lobby.
Uh, lobby of city hall? Okay, perfect, thank you. Um, and then when you know who the guide will be for that tour, go ahead and let me know, um, and we'll get that written in for our records.
Definitely should ask, my, my gut is, Dave, but we should see it rather be in the conversation sessions or.
Yeah, someone like Daryl may not care to be in there.
Right, like.
Kevin Turner may not need to be in, if you drive him around.
You sort of identify who would be appropriate for the tour?
I, I got a conflict, because what you're talking about, the, the, me, the best one, would be Dave, because he's gonna come back with input. Him and Lori, to me, would be the top two to do it.
That's where my head is too.
But the problem is.
Eric should be in the interview.
They'll be on the panel or whatever.
They should be, they'll be there the night before too, but they should be talking to them, I want them to be able to give their observation.
I like.
Their one-on-one observations, each one.
Right.
It's, it's much more.
I'll see if Dave would be willing to not be in the, the setting and do a one-on-one observation with each one individual.
My best observations came from the tour guide.
Yeah.
What I want.
Because one group will be there, one group will be here, one group guy will be here, one will be on the tour, and they'll just rotate through.
What about Isaac?
Maybe NJ?
Doing the tour, yeah.
Maybe someone with Dave that helps.
Yeah, I was gonna say Isaac and Dave on that.
Who could do the driving?
Yeah.
Isaac can focus on the driving and.
I like that.
Talking and engaging.
That's what, to me, Lori would be so good, if Lori and Dave could do the tour.
I thought we're trying to free Dave.
Well, that, or one of them.
I don't, I don't think Dave's gonna go into the panel.
Yeah.
Dave on the tour would be best, because he gets one-on-one with each guy, okay, versus five of them. But I would ask him, give him and Lori, Dave, if you want to be on the panel, we'll find someone, but give him first choice on driving, Lori's second choice. Lori would probably like to be in the panel.
And I, I would say if we could balance out the community development with NJ, so you've got like public works and community development in that interview, like or in the, a tour.
A tour, yeah.
If Dave does it, maybe we could make NJ the driver, something like that, I don't know, we can make it work.
We had Brenda hosted lunch.
The public works assistant.
What was that, Bob?
We had hosted lunch right now, is that where we stopped?
That's where we're at, yes, so are, is the city going to have a hosted lunch for the panel members?
Think you should.
Yeah. We're at nine, it will be about noon, one o'clock, we'll have a lunch.
They're here?
Think, well, you probably have been doing is having nine, ten, eleven, then break for lunch and then do one more at one o'clock. As far as the panels, well, Jeff Ward, one interview, and then take a break and then say about two-thirties-ish, then the mayor and council will begin the.
You want to go to the food trucks?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll see, if the food trucks are open, um, we can, I mean, we can, we'll cater, we'll get a lunch.
Be great.
Perfect. Are candidates invited? Are candidates invited?
Who?
Candidates.
Candidates?
Lunch, oh yeah, absolutely.
Sometimes the, yeah, yeah, client likes, take that time to do the debriefing, if they've got all the interviews done.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It won't be done though, so that'll be okay, I think it's.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is just our lunch break?
This is just a lunch break.
I just wanna make sure that we don't, um, have, talk past each other here real quick, who's gonna be scheduling the rooms? To make sure that's on, you're doing, okay, I just wanna make sure we.
They're gonna do it themselves, yeah, we'll let, we'll give them.
No, not the hotel rooms, our conference rooms. Okay, oh, got it, okay.
Susan and Brenda can coordinate that.
Perfect. Um, and then, I know we were thinking about we're having three panels, is that correct? So we know one is the mayor and council panel, um, is the next one gonna be made of staff? Is that gonna be community, or are they kind of a mix of both?
A mix.
A mix, two panels that are mixed of staff and stakeholders.
Stakeholders, okay, perfect.
And you're talking five to six in each, if possible?
Wonderful, okay. And then, in each of these panels, we usually have a facilitator. Now, Bob is available to be a facilitator in one of these panels, um, something to think about is who else you would want to have be a facilitator.
Who else are you able to lend from your staff?
Richard, may you be available?
I think I would be, for the eleventh and twelfth, yeah.
We, I'll, I'll, uh, Richard or I will be with mayor council, we've got, uh, then we got me and Richard with one other panel, we've seen one other facilitator, that really are.
Let's, what panel least needs a facilitator, us? You're, sure they're too covered and then.
I'll sit with the mayor council though, you don't need facilitation, I just need to be in there.
Right, he needs to be in the.
Yeah, I just need one other.
The staff would, it's like, the staff would probably be the easiest.
Yeah.
No.
They'll be mixed.
Yeah, cause.
That's, I, I am confused over that, just, not that I wanna, so you want staff and community members in, you, you want them together? With two panels?
Yes.
So you wanna mix of them, the two panels?
Three of each, three.
Okay, no, that's, I just. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna mix those up.
When you say community, I, I guess I wanted to find that, are we talking, we're talking stakeholders, so are we talking, like, uh.
Community commissioners, library, fire committees.
Okay, what about, like, uh, you know, Paul Vogel, uh, you know, part of EDC? Yeah.
He would be on there somewhere, I. At the top and work our way down.
You know, community, um, uh, organizations that we, that the city engages with.
Two other panels besides the mayor council, you can certainly expand to seven, that's okay, I've seen as large as ten, that's just a little bit unwieldy.
I'd agree.
Well, if staff is gonna be, if, if one staff is out driving and.
Just, you know, between five and seven.
And we definitely include the school system.
Oh, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Superintendent?
Superintendent?
I would.
Omic.
Oh, you know, we put it together.
Omic.
New director, oh, and me.
But somebody's interested in helping you. If they feel obligated to want it, oh, but then they're not really necessarily engaged.
Or to Columbia County, would I try to get one? County commissioner, just one. Flip a coin and ask that person, first.
Yeah.
He's, he's kind of a rep.
You, you know the folks out here better than anybody, and make sure that they're gonna be engaged.
Do you have someone from our police department?
It's true.
Absolutely, I, I have the staff part of it. Yeah, absolutely.
Fire district.
Say on the, the actual list, like the ideation, we, we have to do the ideation in open, or can we make our lists? Like individually sent to, uh, back us and start whittling it down that way? Cause I worry if we just start naming names, we're gonna be here a long while, just going through all of our.
Go ahead and, I would, that's a great idea, submit your, your suggestions to Mayor Backus. He can work with, uh, the council president or someone else and, and select, you know, seven per. Or you got the, the senior staff ready, then you just gotta add to that.
Yeah.
Come up with the difference there.
Sounds good.
Perfect. And then once you know who that third facilitator should be, to go ahead and just let me know, so we have for our records. So. Um, and then we'll put the candidates in our list, and do we have a specific date, or are we going to be releasing the candidates' names on a specific date?
What do you recommend, what date should we re, it's all kind of based upon.
Right, if, if you're gonna have the reception eleventh, I would encourage the week before.
Stay on the fourth, we have a meeting June third, Monday, and all goes well and nothing changes after that meeting. Uh, don't go out on the fourth.
Because at least, you could actually release one June third.
You want, make sure you provide them.
Absolutely, yes, yeah, that, that, that gives me an idea, and I'll, I'll let them know based on the date you give them tonight.
Works.
When I call them, when I call them, I'll let them know that it's gonna be June.
Okay.
Perfect.
And do we, um, are you, is it simply just a matter of releasing the names? Or do we have to do short little bios on each of them? What's the best practice? Oh, you got that?
Typically, I'll write up the bios on them, if you're gonna have any more information than bios, that's typically. Be something that like, a newspaper would do, or the city says this is what we wanted, but I can write up the bios on each of the candidates.
Perfect.
Short bio sounds.
You'll have like a news release on the fourth, and it will have these dates.
Yes.
Interviews, and it will have.
Okay, you're gonna write it all up.
We release our four candidates, and here's our.
Okay.
The bios.
The paper comes out on Friday, so it won't be in time for that particular Friday.
We'll release it, but you'll give us all the content in order.
Yes.
Bios, and then we'll probably wanna put in the schedule of the events that we're doing, okay. And we can embargo it, too.
I do have, yeah, our spotlight paper, like, deadline might be really early Tuesday morning, so. If something I can send to him Tuesday, then it goes in the Friday paper.
Right.
Yeah, well, Mayor, why don't you make?
Oh, it's a week before, so we're. Can, can we provide a release to the newspaper and embargo it, just so you can't release it?
Why don't you make it the third, so you'd actually release it at a council meeting?
Then they're gonna ask me about it, and then I'll talk about it.
Okay.
I don't mind, I'm just trying to think of why wouldn't you.
Just say, can't talk about it.
Announce it, I, I, you guys like that, I.
It's just simply an announcement, we're not going to talk about the candidates, it's just, these are the four candidates, and.
Wanna do it.
If it was on.
You could announce the names on June third and say the press release will be available next morning.
Next morning.
Like, just make sure that the agenda died, and it's not discussion thereof.
Susan, we get with the school district, and we'll make big posters each one, and we'll, and during the meeting, we'll. Pop a picture of each one of who we're finalists are.
Just need to.
Brenda, is it possible we could have, have this stuff ready by May thirty-first, and then have the press embargo candidates' names?
Depends how quickly they get back to us, but yeah, that should be just fine.
A lot of their paper is online, so I mean, if, whatever reason, if we don't. We'll go out immediately on their online stuff, and then.
I know I can have the bios ready by the thirty-first.
And then, do you send it to the paper, you send it to us, and we send?
We send it to you, and you send it.
Susan, send it to, one of you guys figure out how to do it, I don't know.
Will you have, you just say what the release date is, and then it can't be released, will you have all the background information necessary by the thirty-first? So is there a risk?
Reference checks, or the, uh, we'll have them probably, oh, they won't be ready for the following Friday, probably, right, Brenda? Or is the background checks and the reference checks?
It just depends, per situation, per candidate. Majority of the time, we have the criminal and education back fairly quickly, I'd say within about a week, week and a half. It's usually the references that are a little slower to get back, cause it really just depends on when the reference fills it out. So, those can range anywhere between a couple of days to two or three weeks till we get those back.
We can do those tonight, since we know the candidates, I will make calls, uh, starting tonight, when I, when I start driving home. Also, get tomorrow, but I'll let them know that, Brenda, you send this stuff out tomorrow, Brenda, to them, or can the convert, can, for a company?
Yeah, I can send it out to them tomorrow.
Get it to them tomorrow, then they can start filling it in, and I'll remind them, you know, times of the essence here, and we don't have to wait till next Tuesday or something.
Yeah, that's great.
And the references get it, though, they, that's up to them to fill it out, and I'll remind the candidates, let them know that.
You say then the backgrounds may not be done by the time the names are announced, the fourth?
Backgrounds, Brenda, Brenda said should be okay, that and the criminal history checks should come on. But the reference.
Criminal education should be done by then, yes.
Education, that's what I meant, thanks, reference will take a little bit. Right, and then we got some deliberals, Brenda?
Perfect, and then, as we continue to work through this process, yes, I was just gonna check on one thing. As we continue through this process, if we have questions that come up with details, who should be the person that we contact first?
Susan and Larry?
Yeah.
Susan's our.
Yeah.
Susan's our council secretary, so I'd say Susan.
That's to ensure that you folks obviously get the information to seventy-two, and it's been going well so far.
I think so.
Anything else, Brenda?
Uh, I'm just gonna double check, we're gonna do confidential, not confidential packets, as well as, I'm assuming for that. Uh, community reception, you want a comment card as well?
Yes.
Perfect, and we know we're doing the bios, and we already talked about the suggested interview questions are coming. I believe that is all that I need on my side. And then I will have a, I'll work on a draft schedule for what finals will look like. And I should have that over to Larry on Tuesday at some point, and then he can distribute that. To whoever needs to view that and kind of approve it, and of course, we can always edit and make tweaks of that as needed.
Then at the bottom of the la, of that third page, at the top of the fourth page, there's got the, my responsibilities too, I wanna make sure we note those.
That's Susan.
We'll, we'll work with that too, as we, on here, we'll, close contact. What I'll do for the questions is I'll, I'll draw them up, three different, uh, packets, one for mayor council, and then the other two would be the. Analyst questions, and I'll put them in the separate, distribute the questions equally amongst them, and then you can take a look at those, and anything else added to, we can do that. Take anything off, you can do that as well, so, get that out to you, plenty of time for you to review it.
I'll have to look, because you're in a panel in the historical house, Watts house, you know, there's not a lot of room, but they're gonna wanna sit down and. Be able to take notes, and.
Yes.
So if, for some reason, I'll look at it, if it doesn't, like, will fit, we, library might have two rooms.
The CDC could handle some.
There's this movie room.
Cathedral, I mean.
Ensure that there's some privacy there. But you also make sure you got enough table room, and you got access to restrooms, that's.
Watts house, they can kind of spill from the dining room to the.
Yeah, there, there, we, we have our board meetings, there, you know, people are in seats, and then there's a table.
Excellent process you folks went through, I really, uh.
You confident?
Very confident, I really like the process, and you folks are much.
You're just saying that.
And I'd also don't say you're my most important client tonight, I don't do that, no.
It's a check cleared.
I feel good, thank you.
Yeah, again, good, good list of candidates as well.
It's good.
We'll, we'll destroy these, um, make sure they get shredded, so.
We'll do that.
Thank you. Appreciate your cooperation as well, I understand there's still one other council already, and someone needs to, that, that person be contacted and that.
And the notes he gave me, that I said, he, he listed a few, and, and it, it fits with what he said, too. Um, so, and I kinda take out the ones that aren't, you think, and shred them, and keep these, so I have information going forward. And if we pop any more up, you'll give us more new cards.
Absolutely, your packets.
Totally.
That's everything I have, anything else? Thank you, Brenda, thank you guys.
Thank you, Brenda.
You need adjourned. Now we're going back into executive session. I got, should I read this, Berg? City scappus will now meet executive session for the purpose of ORS one nine two six six zero. Dash two dash D for labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room, representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced, no decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in.